... of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Hello and welcome to the Special Board of Commissioners meeting for October 22nd, 2014. Tonight, we have our first hearing on our 2015 budget. Before we begin, I'd like to ask if there's any public participation. Seeing none, we'll just get right into it. So what we're doing tonight is having our first hearing. We will have a presentation from staff that will go over their recommendations and their thinking and what's in this budget. Then we'll have some opportunity for the commissioners to give the staff feedback and reaction to what's in there. Then we will have an opportunity for the public to comment. The end of the night, we will wrap it up and the staff will go back to the drawing board and incorporate the comments and thoughts that they hear tonight and we will be looking at another version of this at the next hearing. Okay? With that, I'm going to turn it over to our staff and we're all ears.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Just to begin the process here, we stole one of the items from goal setting from the board. We talked about consensus and a lot of that is from the staff working together from all the different levels. Everybody's got their ideas. Every department's the most important. Everybody sees things differently. But I think the process of everybody working through it and seeing the bigger picture for the township, I just want to commend the staff for all their hard work and efforts to be able to see that and come to some consensus that kind of hears what's in the best interest of Radnor Township. Again, just to go through, I know we've spoken about this, the total headcount for staff. You can see that the numbers have continued to drop here and a lot of that began sometime in 2008, 2009 where the board started to look at how we would continue to trim staff. Even with the proposed number of staff taking us to 125, this compares to back as, we can go back to 1998, that the staff is greatly reduced and I think this speaks volumes to the type of employees that we have, that as we have reduced staff, they've continued to perform their job. The only thing that I think we need to mention here is that we did have, out of the services that were provided back in 98 to today, the only thing that's different is the rear yard trash pickup that no longer exists. And you can see the low dip there that we look at in '12 and '13 where you had the 119, 117. Again, that was one thing I wanted to thank the commissioners as well. We were in negotiations as part of that with the FOP and not replacing a number of the officers there, so that's why you see those numbers there until we had a new agreement. And again, I speak volumes again for our, both the unions for their cooperation that they've had along with this. Again, we referred this last time when you look at the budget, those who say we're spending a whole lot more money than what was done in the past, just to show that's kind of a, it sounds good to say that, but really not, but also the Board of Commissioners over the last three years have taken some strong initiatives to start paying on some of these numbers and these issues that we've had that basically, as I said, the board has been saddled with having to start to pay for some of these issues and decisions that were made in the past. We also know then too, we've talked about staff of where we are and top-heavy of where we have been, when you look at the organizational chart in 2008 compared to where we sit today, it's a significant difference in that. And then also, if we go to the comparison, you can see just the administrative staff there. There are 15 less administrative employees since 2008. So here you see between Recreation Program, Public Works, again, the administrative staff, this does not go down to those levels of the reduction that has taken place and we have still been able to operate efficiently. So I know sometimes it always sounds good too that, you know, oh, we got too much management or that. You can see how we've greatly reduced this and those individuals now that if we streamlined this, continue to provide these services. And again, I'm going to be very biased, this speaks volumes for the type of leadership that we have in this organization. Also too, I think another big item, this is something that the board made very clear of the issues regarding the audit findings, when we hear those words talked about transparency, the optics of the organization and that, to see the tremendous efforts that have been made and a lot of this I will tip my hat to is the staff as well as our Carfac organization too and a director from the board to make sure we are accountable to what's done. I also want to recognize, you know, Bill White and his finance staff, is there's a lot of information that's out there, the checkbooks that's out there. Those, you know, who questioned that, I know there was some significant findings. Anybody more than welcome to read this book. This was the Markham and the Neil Morris report that talks about what had gone on previously to now, you know, happy to share this of the big changes that have been made. And again, I think that goes back to the audit of how that's handled, where the Board of Commissioners meet with the auditors independently of staff, the auditors meet independently with Carfac without staff or the Board of Commissioners, to again, multiple eyes looking at what's taking place. And again, that just, again, sets the director from the Board of Commissioners of how you want to see things done. And with that, I'll turn that over to Bill now to go through our budget.
Thank you. Load up. There it is. All right. What I was planning on doing tonight is instead of stepping through all of the numbers and assumptions, again, since it was presented on October 13th at a high level, is just step through the budget document that was published and any of the changes since the last time we met and discussed it. And then we can go into your questions after that and go into as much detail as you'd like. So the budget document as published at this point, it's the Township Manager's recommended comprehensive budget. This is version one. We understand that there'll probably be more versions, so at this point, we're working off of version number one. The navigation's pretty simple. When you open it up, there's the table of contents on the left-hand side of the screen that can help you jump through. It has all the significant sections of the budget, including a tab for each of the township's funds. We have the general fund, sanitary fund, sanitary sewer fund, liquid fuels, and so on, all the way through our debt service fund. So those, you could jump through all of those and the five-year capital plan update is within, is tabbed along with the capital improvement fund and that's to help the reader jump through to section by section depending on what it is they're looking for. The one page I will jump on, I'm not going to zoom in and expect anyone to actually read that, but this is helpful to anyone who's new to looking at the budget. We put this in a couple of years ago. It's a fund organizational chart, so it spells out all the funds of the township and then what those funds are responsible for accounting for, in case anyone has any questions or is looking something up. So within the executive summary, it steps through the major assumptions of the budget, including the things that are significant changes going into the 2015 accounting year. We'll start off with the property tax adjustment. This section spells out that there are two adjustments included in what the Township Manager is recommending. The first one being a roughly a 3.05% tax increase and that is to offset the cost of adding a drug task force and that would be the addition, adding three additional police officers. And that was reflected in the chart that the manager showed a moment ago from '14 to '15 in terms of increased staffing. The other item is adding a nominal amount, 1.9% to fund the capital program. We've discussed it in many occasions over the last couple of years, that the capital program has benefited from unanticipated revenues that have come in that have allowed us to redirect money to fund the program without having to establish any kind of permanent funding source. So with the understanding that those types of revenues, unanticipated large revenues, are not anything that we can count on year over year, introducing a small amount into this budget in terms of dedicated funding seems to be a good idea. So that's what the 1.9% is being recommended for here. It's to begin to address permanent funding for capital. In terms of dollars, that would generate about $220,000 to $230,000 that will be directed to capital and just by way of example, that kind of funding would take care of the police vehicles and equipment for 2015 and moving forward. There's the table that we stepped through on the 13th with the previous tax adjustments over the years and then we've added now what has been proposed for '15. There are two different sections of a tax adjustment for '15. There's the two that I just discussed with the drug task force and the capital funding and then also based on the ordinance that was adopted last December for the purchase of the open space at Ardrossen. 2015 was anticipated as the year in which those bonds would be issued and therefore that's the year that the tax adjustment would be necessary to begin helping to fund and pay down that debt service.
And just to point this item out here, in the recommended budget I'm proposing, my proposal is a 4.95% tax increase. It is not an 8.95% tax increase. The board made the determination on the additional 4% with the purchase, so I just want to make that point very clear.
Then continuing on with the impact of Ardrossen and the open space acquisition is noting that this budget includes roughly $56,000 to account for, build in a budget for maintaining the open space, the three areas, the three parcels. And that was an estimate that was provided last year as part of the open space policy analysis that was presented to the board by Carfac. We use the same number, understanding that I think some of the maintenance on the property is still up in the air or hasn't been determined definitively yet. Then the other piece is the board was approached by the Historical Society a couple of months ago requesting funding for, to help out their organization, so this budget does include $15,000 to provide to that organization. And this is probably a good point to note that in the version that went out, the spreadsheet that we keep all this information in, I had mistakenly reset the assumption for all the community organizations. As we were discussing through our internal meetings about different versions of the budget and different scenarios with the goal of trying to keep the tax, any kind of tax adjustment as low as possible, we had set at one point the community organizations to 0% increase. That was supposed to be reset by myself to include a 2.75% increase and tie it to the payroll assumptions, which we've done over the past couple of years. So that is one amendment that would be in the next version that's not in this one, is increasing each of the community organizations by 2.75%, which will change these numbers a little bit, but that, so that was an error on my part in trying to wrap up this version of the budget. Some of the items, I won't go into a lot of detail with these next few because we went through them on the 13th, but it does, this budget does include a 2.75% increase for the FOP and the rate employees and those are pursuant to the collective bargaining agreements. And then for all the non-union full and part-time employees, it includes an assumed 2 and 3/4% increase and each of those will be determined on a merit basis and the increase will be, any increase will be up to 2 and 3/4 at the discretion of the manager. And then touching again, and again, I won't go into a lot of detail here, the manager touched on it, is the staffing assumptions, providing a little bit of history as well as calling out the areas in the budget that include additional or replacement employees. So the drug task force, again, that's three additional officers. As we discussed on the 13th, the Public Works sanitation division, this budget includes replacing two of the full-time positions in that division. And again, this came up in our review, so it's important to point out here as well that whereas the drug task force, we're recommending a tax increase to fund it because that is a new program over and above the service level that is offered today, the Public Works sanitation positions are replacements of positions that have been vacated over the last few years. Therefore, the assumption is, is that the funding for those positions is already implied within the rates as they exist now, so that's why there's no recommendation to increase taxes for those two.
Bill, before you move on, I just want some clarity. Anytime we're talking about personnel, are we talking about the authorized number or the actual number of personnel?
We're talking about the number of folks that are on, the folks who are on payroll.
So it's the actual number?
Yeah, so it would include, it includes every employee that's on the payroll, whether they're active or if they're on any kind of leave or anything like that.
Thank you.
Sure. And then the budget does go into the same history that the manager provided with the full-time headcount and then it steps through, actually, I can hide this to blow that up a little. Steps through the pension obligations, again, we spent some time on the 13th reviewing that. It includes fully funding the MMO for 2013, or 15. And interestingly, as an aside, we had a conversation with Moody's this morning relative to the upcoming bond deal and this topic came up and we'll find out definitively next week, but Moody's was complimentary to the township for taking the steps, knowing that making decisions on changing the assumptions in the funding plan for pension was going to have an immediate increase in cost, but knowing that doing that was going to mean long-term funding, improved funding for the plan. So it came up in the conversation and Moody's recognized that. So as we talked about last Monday, that's part of the reason why these numbers are jumping up, is the township taking a more realistic and aggressive approach to getting the pension plans caught back up. And then the last piece of this section is again highlighting the OPEB funding plan that was initiated in '14 and then continuing then for '15 and so on. And this is another area where we spent a considerable amount of time this morning with Moody's on, just making sure that they're aware of the township's approach to solving an unfunded liability that's on our balance sheet. And then the rest of the executive summary goes into a high-level description of the different areas of service provided by the township and it's highlighted with graph one here that breaks down the total expenditures for all the funds of the township. So this includes the sanitary sewer, the stormwater, the capital, the parking open space, the canine and the willows, the debt service. So this includes every fund of the township and how that breaks out into the different areas of service or the different expense functions that make up the budget. Then we talk a little bit about revenues and I know we've talked about this in our meetings, but it's important to note again that the township revenue makeup in the general fund can be broken up, I'm sorry, in all funds can be broken up into three, three pieces to the pie with real estate taxes, Act 511 taxes, and then permits, fines, department earnings, and others. And the reason why that piece appears to be so big is it includes the sanitary sewer rent, the stormwater fee, as well as all of the earnings from each of the departments from their activity. Highlighting real quickly on the importance of the Act 511 taxes, which is graph three here, it's the different revenue sources that make that up, business privilege tax being the largest by far. There's a brief discussion on how that's important to the overall funding of the township and our ability to deliver service, is without those revenues, all things being equal, the real estate tax, the average real estate tax bill would have to be approximately $1,200 higher just to continue to provide the same level of service. So I think that speaks to the importance of the business community and the important role they play in assisting the township with providing the services. Then the executive summary goes into a little, starts breaking down how the dollars are spent within the general fund. The graph here is showing how the millage rate could be broken up amongst the different activities, so and then that's further broken out and applied to the average tax bill or the median tax bill in Radnor, which is $1,082. How that $1,082 could be, is broken up amongst the different cost centers of the township. The next section goes department by department and each of the department heads worked, has been working over the last four years to put this information together, but I think this, this section does a good job of breaking out the departments into actual service delivery areas, so the reader can gain an understanding of what it is each of the departments, what they're doing and the services provided. So if you take some time and step through this and look at each of the different areas, I think you gain an understanding of just how many services the township is actually providing through all of its different departments. Then there's an aggregate financial information table that just draws some comparisons, revenues and expenses from 2011 through what is proposed for '15. And that helps take a quick look at some of the major revenue and expense centers to see where the changes are occurring. Then there's some detail about the outstanding debt of the township and what 2015, what'll occur in '15 that will change that picture in terms of pay downs and where the debt will end up at the end of '15. And at this point, these tables here do not include the Ardrossen numbers because we don't have them yet. Those are still being developed. So I didn't want to include estimates on, in terms of what those bonds might look like here, because we're still evaluating the structure and obviously the pricing is still subject to another, another few weeks of market condition change, so I didn't want to present that in here and have it be significantly off. And then the final section is just a highlight, a high-level summary of the funding that's taking place for the capital program for each of the years. '15 is the year that we're appropriating for and then '16 through '20 are just part of the five-year capital plan and for informational purposes only, just to see how the plan looks over the long term. And then obviously, if the detail behind that is in the five-year capital plan, which is in the budget document. So those are the major areas of the executive summary and the changes from Monday, the 13th that have been incorporated within the budget, within the manager's recommended budget. I think, and I can go into a lot more detail, but it'd probably be the best use of the time here is to make sure that the board's questions are answered and we get a general direction on which, which way the board would like to see this go.
Thank you, Bill. I'll go ahead and start us off. First of all, I want to say again, it's just an extraordinary job that you, Finance Department has done on this document. It's easy to read, it's easy to understand, and most of the questions I had as I was going through it, I could get an answer to within a few pages, which, that's a great document. And the ones I couldn't, I got an answer within an hour from Bill, so it was great. There's some things I really like about this, which I've said every year we have the budget because we usually do this and that is the conservative growth estimates. You know, we've estimated in this budget that business privilege tax will go up by 3% and the transfer tax, transfer, real estate transfer tax will go up by around 4. Those are conservative numbers, given our history, and I, you know, I think that's smart. There are also some built-in increases in here that we can't really do anything about. Our health care in most of the categories is up by 8% estimate, that's what we estimate. Salaries, 2.75 across the board for everyone, that's going up. Also, I'd like to point out that although we have 120 employees that we're paying for and that are in this budget, there are also 107 employee, ex-employees that we pay for now. I mean, we pay out every year and we're paying benefits to them now. And on top of the 120 and the 107, we're also putting money and stepping up what we're putting in towards the future benefits that we'll be paying for the 120 that are there now. So there's a lot going in this that we don't have control about that has gone up. I want to give you my thoughts on the 2015 spending and the recommendations. First, the three officers for the drug task force. I, in my opinion, I don't think we're in the position right now to sanction that. It's a very significant and a permanent expense and we haven't really had the opportunity to really examine the alternatives and the logistics, so I'm not comfortable at this point. It's not a no, never. It's a, we're not right, we're not there right now. But most importantly, I am worried about, we've been hearing since I've been on this board that we need more patrol and that's a need that we have and we don't have enough officers. And my worry is that if we have, if we make a significant expenditure on a specific task force that's not adding patrol, we're sort of blowing our police spending wad and not addressing the patrol issue. So I want to make sure that's all hashed out and that we have staffing under control on all aspects of public safety before we make a move like that. For the Public Works, two employees, absolutely yes. I think it's clear that we need those two employees full-time. And as far as the 1.9% increase going towards capital, I think that's a very wise move for us to make. 1.9, you know, is a reasonable amount. It's only 200,000, 200-plus change thousand a year that's going to go towards that, but it's a good move to start making to build up money to go to capital without borrowing. So those are my 2015 thoughts. I just want to briefly comment on the 2016 and forward forecast. And when you go through it, there's some pretty alarming expenditures. You know, they start to go up very quickly, very, and most of all, it's the traffic, traffic systems that we think we're going to have to invest in if there's more development, when there's more development, up and down Route 30 and King of Prussia Road. And those numbers that are in our 2016 and beyond budget here are in the millions and that's alarming to me and I don't want to be in the position where we have to raise taxes to cover that, so I think that's something that we have to really put some thought into this year. The other big increase in spending in the 2016 and beyond is parks and rec and a lot of investment, over a million dollars of investment a year in our parks. And that's unusual for us, we haven't spent that much money on our parks typically. So that's something we're also going to have to discuss, where we would get the money to do that, if that's appropriate, et cetera. Then finally, my last thought that I want to reiterate is that the Ardrossen purchase, it will happen hopefully this, by the end of this year and yes, there will be a .15 millage increase as was presented to the community when we voted on entering into the agreement. That is not part of the recommended budget, that is not part of the manager's recommendation, that is part of what the voters recommended, 80% of our voters recommended, that we take out a bond to pay for this open space. So that will kick in this year and it's, as I said, a .15 mil increase for the median homeowner, that's going to be about $40 a year. For about 67% of our taxpayers, that's going to be $30 a year. And for almost everyone, for 92% of our taxpayers, it's under $98. So it's, it's an increase and it's, you know, something our voters voted on and that adds an increase to our budget this year that I want to make clear was not the decision or the recommendation of our staff, it was our voters and this board that made that decision. And that is it. Anybody else?
If I could, just jump in real quick and I appreciate the compliments, but this really is a team effort. Each of the departments spent a considerable amount of time in helping put this together, so while I appreciate those being directed my way, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize each of the other departments for their contributions because they're just as much part of it.
I stand corrected.
All right. I am one of the people who, as you know, Bob said, for those people who think we're spending too much, I am one of
spending too much, I am one of those people, and I stand by that concern. First, the figure that, Bob, the figure that you showed includes the amount of money spent for the building, as I understand it. And so to me, that graphic skews the image in that we have a significant expansion of our spending. I recognize that a sizable amount of that is non-discretionary, and there's no alternative. But a sizable amount of that is also discretionary, and we've chosen to have it. And now we're paying the price for that, for those choices. The two in particular are stormwater and open space. So they're two sizable, big-ticket items. We're spending a lot of money on those things, and they're driving our expenses up. I'm not sure we're getting value for what we're paying for those two items at this So we went through this a million times during the Ardrossen debate. I don't think the voters approved that Ardrossen purchase. I think the four of you approved it, which is acceptable. But that vote in which you're saying the voters approved it was long ago and under different circumstances. So I don't accept that, that point. A question for Bob. Bob, why the Historical Society? It seems like there are a lot of entities in the township. Why have we selected that one to expand and make a contribution to?
The presentation that was made to the board. Typically in the past, a lot of organizations have come before the board, and they've been granted monies. Here is based on the work that the Historical Society has done. I'm just going to use the Radnor Trail as an example, where they have, I believe they've paid for the markers, the historical markers on the trail. It's very clear that the history of this township is important to many people, to preserve that history. And I think out of any of the dollars we spend is probably best spent towards the Historical Society.
Okay. So for me, I'm not opposed to it at this point, but I would need, it's difficult to make a decision like that. Granted, it's a small amount of money, but I would want some kind of guidance as to where it's going to stop. Who are we going to give money to? Who are we not? Some kind of rules. I'd be concerned that it's just, you know, every year, we're going to have another request, and those requests will mount up and be significant.
I agree with you, Don. I think there should be a policy, as well as I think there should be a follow-up policy for all the money we give these organizations, that they must come back and report to the board of how those dollars you assign to them, how they're used, with the requirement of an audit report that's actually presented to the board, too, to make sure that the dollars you're giving are being spent the appropriate way.
Okay. So I don't think that we can expand staff. So I would be, you know, I'm open to the expanding the officers for the drug task force. We haven't had enough information to make a decision, but it's going to be an uphill battle because I don't see, looking at what you've provided and what we've seen over the last five years, I think we're going to be hard-pressed to expand staff. For me, that doesn't mean I want to contract staff. So you have two Public Works employees, and it's my understanding that that's not a contraction, or excuse me, not an expansion, but that's a maintenance of a decision that we made budgets ago. So for me, that's the distinction, you know. And then capital, I guess we're all going to have to take a hard look at because there are just a heavenly host of projects in there, and I don't see where we're going to get the money to fund all of these projects.
Anybody else want to make any comments?
I just have a few. I just want to recap a couple of things that hit home for me. When you look at your tax dollar, only 12 cents of that tax dollar is going to the township. But in my opinion, the township is doing about 90, 95% of the work for the taxpayers in this township. So while we don't want to do tax increases, you know, no board wants to vote for tax increases. The reality is, a tax increase at this level is still far less than tax increases at the school district and county level. So I've been talking about the capital program since I came on the board. I think the first thing I looked at was capital. I wanted to understand how we were going to pay for the infrastructure of this township. And that was back in 2007. And back in 2007, we were falling short. And just last year and this year, we've finally gotten that capital program kind of engaged again. And, you know, if anything, I just personally think the mission of this township is to maintain the infrastructure of the township and provide services for the township residents. So if we have priority, it should be on the capital and services. And I want to just emphasize that when I came on the board, we had far more employees than we do now. When I came on the board in 2007, we had 149. And now we're at 125. We actually dipped as low as 117. This is all off of the peak of 166. So I say it every year since our new administration has come on board, that this administration has found a way to provide more services with less cost than all prior administrations. So kudos to all of you sitting in the room tonight. I appreciate all the hard work you guys do. I don't have the right words to explain it. I mean, you're literally doing a lot more with a lot less, and that's good. Good for the taxpayers. But we have to be mindful of the burdens that may place on staff, and we want to make sure we don't continue to understaff and we maintain staff at a certain level. I don't have any specific comments on the budget, although I would argue that I still feel that we should engage the capital funding sooner than later. And if we're looking at a tax increase, you know, maybe a slight incremental increase on the tax increase to cover some additional capital work now. If we keep putting off the capital work, what we'll see is, in my opinion, is catastrophic failure of systems that will end up costing us a lot more if we wait. I made this argument six years ago, five years ago. You know, the cost to replace the sewer pipe in the ground doubles if you wait for it to collapse. So, you know, we should be proactive in funding the sewer system, the, you know, all the systems in the township, and make sure that we're not undercutting that. So, you know, I would support, and I'll go on the record, I would support a modest tax increase to cover capital expenses because, in my opinion, that's good value for the residents. They see immediate impact, they see immediate benefit. You know, we're looking at a 4% tax increase due to Ardrossen. You know, I was against incurring new debt. I was against spending money for open space, but this does seem like a very good deal for the township. I remember when the deal was 20, 20-some million, and now we're down to about 11 or 12 million. So it seems like a much better deal. So I'm not generally against that. But if I had my choice, if we weren't buying the open space, that 4% would obviously go right into capital. I wouldn't even argue it. I do want to support the police department. I do think it's a good idea to have additional officers, although I think I agree with Commissioner Schaefer's comment that, you know, adding 3% to the budget now, to the tax increase now, to add a new service, might not be the best time to do it. We may want to look at that if we don't do it this year, look at it the next year. And that leaves us at the capital funding. We're looking at a 1.9% tax increase for capital funding. I still think that's below a threshold. You know, in general, rules of thumb generally say 2% to 3% is what you should set aside for capital repairs, capital infrastructure. That's in the private sector. I don't know what it is in government, but 1.9% just doesn't seem to cut it for me. But in general, I like the budget. I appreciate everything that's been done so far, and I don't have any specific changes that I would recommend at this point. But I think, you know, if we're not going to do the drug task force, if we decide not to do that, we're looking at a 5.9% tax increase. Include, yeah, and that includes Ardrossen and the capital funding. And my only argument would be, if we're going to do a 5.9%, make it a 6%, put that little bit of extra in the capital, and let's try to get some of these projects started sooner than later. I continually notice deterioration of the township, you know, despite the efforts of staff. Roads aren't getting paved as much as they used to. The bridges are falling apart. It's not our fault. We're just not spending, we're not spending the money now to fix them. So, you know, if there's anything we can do to put more money into capital, maybe we need to borrow money for capital. It makes sense if you can do a bridge, or if you can do some capital improvement that has 30-year life, you should borrow some money for that. But if we can also pay a portion of it upfront, that would make sense. There are my comments.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just like to talk about the drug task force. I think we need to sit down and talk about that in depth in the next couple of weeks because we're talking about the fabric of our community. And, you know, we've got to find out how much crime is attributed to drugs and how it's affecting our residents. And if the staff is recommending this, the manager's recommending, and the chief is recommending, then I think we need to have a very serious, you know, they're not recommending it because they just want to spend money. They see a problem in our community. And I think we, before we make a decision on this, we ought to sit down with them and have a, about patrol and everything about this task force and what it'll accomplish for us. Because if we don't deal with this and we continue to deal with it on a part-time basis, it might be a bigger drain on the fabric of our community. And so that's what we consider doing. And John, as far as capital, I think what the staff is doing is, there are other things going into capital other than this 1.9%. But they're trying to set a thing, put 1.9% in this year, and then maybe next year, 1.9%. And then, you know, and continue to build the capital up because one of the things that we decided when you and I were on the board is, we couldn't afford to borrow $6 or $7 million anymore. And I don't want to borrow money for capital. I want to, you know, get it from other sources. And we've been doing that over the last two or three years. There hasn't been enough. But I think what the staff is recommending is, okay, we took some of the fund balance, we've got the stormwater fee, you know, we're doing things to try and deal with this. And now, you know, if we get a couple hundred thousand this year and a couple hundred thousand, well, that's 400,000 next year. And it could be 600,000. And we could just build this thing gradually so that you have a capital every year dedicated of a million or two or three million dollars that you don't have to borrow if you do 1.9%. So I think that's what they recommended is great, and they're my comments.
John or Rich, do you have any comments?
Come on, Rich. No, you go first. You're new, you can start.
I will try. Thank you. I think we ought to have as a goal in the next 60 days to get the 4.95% recommended tax increase down to something much, much lower. I heard Commissioner Schaefer talk about the Parks and Recreation Fund or Budget, and that she noted that we're looking at a million dollars a year. I'm not sure for how many years or when that million dollars starts. But I'm wondering if we can't maybe look at a way to shrink our Parks and Recreation budget to help get us down from the 4.95. We have to stipulate, I think, as a board, we've got four, five votes for the Ardrossen increase. There's no way around that. If that's good and it's wholesome, I'm fully in favor of it. With regard to the police drug force and the additional two employees for refuse collection, again, I get back to Park and Recreation. It's like comparing a luxury versus a necessary or a necessity. The luxury is Parks and Recreation, and the necessity is keeping our community safe and making sure we have good coverage for our trash pickup. And it's worth making, noting as a footnote, that the value to Parks and Recreation, if we do bring two people in or on the rolls for the refuse collection, that will give more labor, application of labor to Parks and Recreation. I do not understand why anybody would attack our stormwater projects. I don't know why anybody would think that's not money well-spent. But I suppose as long as some commissioners are on the board, we'll have that argument. I'm very proud of the fact that we're starting on stormwater. I'm very proud of the fact that we have over a majority, four or five commissioners that approve the stormwater fee. And I have no compunction about voting for that. And we're going to have, we're going to have more needs for effective stormwater management, and I'll be right there fighting for those projects. Bill, I'd like to ask you if you could explain, there's a very scary table on page 10. It's scared a lot of people for the last, since I've been on the board, which is now almost 36 months. And that is $140 million in actuarial accrued liability under our OPEB. And no matter how much I relish or I appreciate the fact that we're putting away $200,000 every year, or actually adding on 200,000, so it's 200, 400, 600, 800, a million, that we just don't seem to be making a dent into that liability. So could you help me understand, are we ever going to get that down?
Well, the answer to that is yes. And that's the intention of the plan, is to get assets or allow the assets to start to grow at a rate higher than what is, let me start over. The answer is yes. The incremental funding per year, over and above the pay-as-you-go, which the pay-as-you-go is basically buying the current year's benefit for all of the retirees. So as we fund incrementally more than that every year, we are setting aside assets that will eventually, and that's what the graph that's up on the screen now, the left one, the OPEB annual expense graph, the 10-year ramp up to annual required contribution. That's what that graph is demonstrating, is ramping up incrementally over a 10-year period to build the assets. And then all the while, those assets are being invested and reinvested. So you have the compounding growth from that aspect as well, to a point where the assets sitting aside to pay for the benefit are equal to the actuarial cost of the benefit. Now, it is, it is difficult to sit here in 2014 and have a great deal of confidence that the folks sitting here in 2060 are going to achieve full-funded status. But that was the, that was the plan elected in lieu of immediately beginning to fund north of $5 million per year to get caught up by 2036, which is what the gray line is indicating on this graph. That's what would be required. So you would have, if we were to shade this area where the pointer's at now, you would have that kind of incremental cost increase now, which would be a significant expense increase, immediate significant expense increase, which shortens the horizon to fully funded status considerably, granted. But then you have the opposite effect when you reach that fully funded status, where you go from a little over $5 million down to less than $2 in a single year. So, and this goes back to the conversation that we had roughly a year ago and with the presentation from CarFAC on the OPEB, the overall pension and OPEB situation, is that the township didn't get in this position quickly, and it's certainly not going to get out of the position quickly of building the funding back up. get out of the position quickly of building the funding back up to full-funded status. So it is something that we're taking a long-term approach to. And the graph on the right reflects that. So the green line is the trust fund balance and the assets that are growing incrementally over the time, based on the increased allocation and direct funding and the compounding interest, and eventually catching up with the accrued liability. So yeah, it's difficult to sit here today and think that far into the future, but that's the plan.
The source of the liability is people. And we have a Hobson's Choice. We have, we keep the people on the rolls, and that's costly. We retire the people early, and that's costly as well.
That's more costly.
More costly.
Right. And understand that the obligation, and this is part of what was reported in the Carfac study, is the township owns the obligation. It's not anything that can be undone, certainly not quickly. It had to be done through collective bargaining, and we've spoken about some of the difficulties in that regard with the FOP. And I'm not sure this is the right forum to get into that detail. But in most cases, these obligations, we've already bought. And so now, what we are having to do is figure out how to fund them. And part of what we discussed a week ago Monday were the concessions and the agreements made by the two unions on new hires to prevent the problem from getting worse for folks down the road, which makes this plan that much more achievable.
That's very important, and that's really one of the nice benefits of our most recent negotiations and our contracts.
Yes, sir.
And both of you, and Bob Tater and Bob Zinkowski, all do credit for that.
And the unions themselves. They were at the table.
Lastly, could you just tell us what we have out there in the way of bonds? How many Series are outstanding? When were they issued, and when are they callable? I know it's in the book, but maybe for the benefit of people that are looking in.
Yes. So the township, at this moment, has four Series that are outstanding. The Series 2013 are split into an A and a B. If you recall, the A portion is the termination of the swap, which was a taxable piece. And then Series B was the refunding of the 2004 bonds. So we have the 9, 10, 12, and 13 Series, all of which are a series of refundings in one form or another, going all the way back to the late 90s. And as a matter of fact, if, for more detail on that, and I can go into as much as you'd like, but under the debt service fund, it's actually missing, so I will correct that. There's a whole narrative that explains all four Series, what the maturities are by Series, and when each of them will be paid off in full. Right now, the township's, the longest-term bond we have are the ones that were issued on this building, which go out to 2034-ish. I'm going off memory. I know no one's going to be able to read this, but...
Just for the residents at home, actually, page 19 of the budget has a summary of all the debt, the Series, and their maturity dates.
So what's up on the screen now represents the annual debt service for the township as it exists. This is what, this is what should be included with the debt service fund in the budget workbook. And its 2037 is actually the longest maturity. So this is the sum of the four issues. So on average, well, for 15, we'll pay 4.2 million in debt service, and this does not include Ardrausen yet. And as you could see, that amount decreases over the next few years to eventually, and it eventually levels out to about 2.7 million per year, which is, the Series, the bond Series 2012 is, the way that bond was structured is that currently, we're paying mostly just interest on, with only paying down about $30,000 a year. And then in the tail end of the bond is where, really where the price of the bond, the cost of the debt service jumps up, and that's where we start applying the principles. So we'll be paying, we'll be paying the highest dollar per year for this building when it's its oldest, as a result of that structure. So that's, I mean, so those are the four Series, and these are the totals that we're paying per year on each of those.
All right. Thank you, Bill. That's all I have.
All right. Rich, are you ready?
I am ready. And I do have quite a few questions here. I am, as has been pointed out, the newest member of this board, so I would ask the indulgence not to be interrupted by anyone on the, any other commissioners while we go through this. First, Bill, if you could turn to page seven of your presentation there. And I'll go through all the, I have page right there. The chart below, I don't see anything for Radnor Studio 21. I did see a reference to Studio 21 in someplace else, but I can't remember if that was last year's or this one. Is there anything more, or is there anything at all for Radnor Studio 21?
Yeah, I didn't include them here. The agreement we have with Radnor Studio 21 is, it's a direct pass-through of Comcast PEG money. So the amount that Radnor Studio 21 gets is determined by Comcast. And basically, what the township is doing is passing that through. So yes, they will get whatever that amount is, and it fluctuates from year to year. And so that's what you saw probably in the general fund statement, is those dollars for each of those years.
And so what is that amount approximately?
It's been as high as $70,000 to $80,000. This year, it was closer to $55,000 to $60,000.
Well, I would like to see some additional money in there for Radnor Studio 21. I think that that's probably worthwhile. So I think that's one of mine that I'd like to do.
Well, just real quick, I mean, we're passing through 100% of those dollars. So anything additionally that we fund to them will come out of other township sources.
Yeah. Understood, understood.
Okay.
And I think they need some equipment update, and I'd like to see HD for those guys. But, so I think that that would be just as worthy as any of these other ones here as well.
It's probably worth noting too, then, in the capital fund, they get 80 cents of the dollar on the PEG funds that we get from Verizon, too. So that's funded through the capital program. And it's, maybe it needs...
Maybe you should highlight that.
Yeah. The amount they get from the township's pretty significant.
Because as far as, you know, it's difficult to see anything. Secondly, I would also point out, on page 18. So on page 18, I heard Elaine say that we have business privilege tax built in for this of 3%, but it looks like 4.7% on page 18 there is the delta. What is the assumption for business privilege increase? Page 18, 18 of 200.
Sure.
It's on the 2015 proposed.
Right. Now, what I have up on the screen now is the actual forecast assumption spreadsheet. So there's different components that make up the business privilege tax.
Right. I'm just looking at the business privilege piece on that page.
Right. So the assumption is 4% on the base.
Okay.
There, we're assuming next year, based on some of the audits that are currently in progress, that there should be an uptick there as well versus this year. So that's going to contribute to the difference between the 4% on the base and the...
See, right there, you see?
Yeah, the 4.7.
4.7.
That's here.
So I mean, I think that Elaine said 3, and I think 4, it's 4, or 4-plus is what we're building in. And that is, that's not, that is not particularly conservative, I would say. Isn't that a little bit aggressive? That's a pretty big year-over-year increase.
Well, to Elaine's point, based on history, no. That's, history's been closer to 7% or 8% per year, the recent history.
Recent, recent history.
Recent history, yeah, post-recession history.
Okay. All right. With respect to the same page, a couple of things. I would also point out, taxes actually have increased in the prior years because we have the stormwater tax, right? That was about 8%. So that has to be figured in with this increase that we're talking about here, because it's about the same amount for the stormwater fee per household of about 8% with stormwater tax. Also, I would also agree with Don, Ardrausen actually was not approved by the voters. I think it's important to have this language. The voters actually approved to establish a fund. So I think that that is not exactly what we're doing here. If we would go back to page nine, and take a look at the charts there, if you look at your 2015 full-time headcount, I see a discrepancy here with the prior year. And I guess you don't have it readily available. It is on the website there. When I look at the prior year, this chart has actually changed relatively significantly. So the number that you have at 117 for 2013, actually, in the chart, same chart last year showed it at 120. At 2012, it showed it at 118, not to 119. And then for 2011, it showed it as 129, as opposed to the 124. And then going back to 2006, it showed it at 155 versus the 153 that you're showing there. What accounts for the change in prior years headcount in this chart? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, I can speak to the more current years. 2006, I'll have to go back and take a look at why there'd be a difference there. But it depends on what point we pull the numbers. So there, in 11, 12, and 13, there were a lot of positions that were vacant at different points that were subsequently filled. So if we, it depends on when we pulled the numbers. So I'll have to go back and take a look. But these numbers were pulled directly off the system last week. I forget exactly when we, when we were putting this chart together.
Right. So that's what I mean, is that you wouldn't expect that the numbers from 2006 would change in the system, right? I mean, it should, that, those should be, 2014 should be, that should be fixed. And the point I'm getting to is that, since I've been on the board, and since I've been looking at this, I've seen increases in the staffing, going from 117 or 118, depending on what it is, to 125 showing on this. So we're really looking at the highest staffing levels for, proposed for 2015 since 2009. So to me, I think that that is significant, and my experience on the board has been a solid increase in staffing.
It's worth noting, I guess, at this point, to point out that since 2013, the three additional employees from 13 to 14 were full-time, three full-time police officers. And as we've discussed, the five, the difference between 14 and 15 are three more police officers, and then the replacement of the two Public Works guys. So that's six police officers, and then the replacement of two Public Works employees.
So, so, I'm sorry, I missed what the significance of that is. You're still saying that it did go up, right? Are you saying it was, are you drawing a distinction between full-time and part-time? Or what was the, what was the distinction you're drawing there?
No, the distinction I'm drawing is just pointing out to the folks in the audience and at home, that those are police officers and Public Works employees that are, that were hired during that time.
Okay. As opposed to administrative staff is what you mean?
As opposed to anyone else.
Okay, all right, fine. Now, below that is the chart on the pension obligations. And I would point out, we talked about this last, last week as well, when you look at 2011, our pension, our gross, our net township expense for pension was about 1.1 million in 2011, and going up to, in 2014, it was about 3.5 million, which is about 222% increase. And I look at that and see, obviously, you know, with $2 million of expenditures on pensions at a time when we just pointed out that 2011, there shows a slight decrease in staffing, it's significant that we have a 200-plus increase in that expenditure and a slight decrease in staffing. And I would say that that seems to me to be where our capital expenditure money is, right? In other words, we don't have that $2 million to spend on stormwater or other projects. We've decided, or it wasn't me, it was this, many people on this current board, and if not all, that have decided to fund this at this level, and that's, could explain where the money is.
Sure. Maybe I'll take a bite at that.
Can I, hold on, Bob. Can I just ask you a question? Bill, what act required townships to fully realize their MMO obligations? It was 2009, 2010, somewhere in there.
I think it's Act 205.
Yeah. So, Rich, just, the reason I brought this up is, because when I came on the board at that time, 2007, we were not fully declaring our obligations for pension and OPEB. The Act didn't require it.
I'm not saying we did, but what I'm saying is, we made a choice.
I'm not, I just want to get this, this is important. But now we're required by law to fully realize on our books the obligations. Prior to the Act, whichever it was, we weren't, and no one was. And that was the big change. All across the country, but specifically in Pennsylvania, we were not disclosing to the public the full obligation of pension and OPEB. And then when we realized what those obligations were, we started disclosing it under law, and we have to fund it then. Once you disclose it, you need to fund it. So I just want to clarify that.
Well, that's neither here nor there. The fact of it is, is that that is where we see a huge increase. And if that's the case, that's, I mean, if you have to do what you have to do, then that's it. But the point is, we had a huge increase in our pension obligation. We then didn't have enough money for capital projects, so now we've imposed a stormwater fee and more capital. So that's my, that's my point with that. And that's, that is where we see some of the discrepancies. The next area that I have is on page 14, right there. So if you could zoom into the 2014 average real estate cost for service. Now, once again, we look at this, and we see several of the items going down. And I recognize that this isn't really a technical chart, but it is, it is a good depiction of how we kind of use our funds based on, in this case, in 2015, we're calling it median. In 2014, we called it average. So I don't know if it's, if it's the same in this case, but, you know, if there is a difference, if you could let me know what the, what the median was here versus the average in 2014. But that's, you can do that offline. The first thing I would point out is that the average, or the resulting real estate bill is 1,082, right up there in the text, right above the, right there. That actually compares with last year's figure of 993, which once again is about a 9% increase year-over-year. And specifically on this chart, when you look at the second from the right, there's an item called transfers to other funds. How could transfers to other funds be a tax? What are you spending there? If it's a transfer, by its terms, it shouldn't result in expenditure, right? It's a transfer. What, that number last year... What, what, that number last year was $1, and it went to $81 this year, which is 8,000% increase. Transfers to other funds. What is that?
All right. Honestly, Commissioner, I'm gonna have to take a look at that, because that may be a formulary that I'll have to take a look at. But understand that transfers from the general fund, we transfer, so, for capital, the money's collected in the general fund and then transferred to the capital fund and spent out of the capital fund. So, to capture that within the general fund, it's coded as a transfer, but it's, it's funds necessary for some sort of expenditure. So, we do that for the, the capital fund. We do that for the, the shade tree. There've been years where we've had to do that to balance the Willow's Fund, so.
Right. So, I would expect to see that $81 spread somewhere among these other bars, right? That's really where it's going.
Yeah, if it's for the capital, that would be correct, and, and I'll have to fix that.
Right.
Because that could just be an Excel problem.
So, so. Otherwise, otherwise, I would say, let's just save the money and not transfer anything. We can cut a lot out of this budget right now.
Yeah, the, the total's going to stay the same. It's just how it's being treated within the spreadsheet.
All right. And because we're showing a reduction, for instance, in 2014, protection of person and property, which I think is the most important to me, was 302, and, and last, and this year we're showing it at 285, but yet, $1 for transfers to other funds at $81 this year. So, and then when we look at overall, a nine percent increase in this total, it seems that that should be spread over the other bar charts so we could see where it actually is being spent. Yeah, I have some more things here. The, the next place I'd like to go is the page 27. We have a lot of charts on page, there we go, 27. So, the, these, these have changed quite a bit year-over-year as well. And the chart that struck me most of all was the, the middle one on the left-hand side called Modified Revenues by Type. And I guess it's really not revenues by type. It's all, it doesn't kind of specify business privilege versus ad valorem versus anything. It's really kind of, this is depicting, what exactly is this depicting?
This is showing what the different revenues might be from the development projects, as well as the incremental increase in the real estate tax as proposed over the forecast period. So, the, the source of the information on this chart can be found on page 26 in the table. You could see each of the different projects and what those amounts are. This is just demonstrating that in graph form. And it does change significantly year-over-year based on different things that are in front of the board and going on within the township.
Right, right. So, I, I think, I call this the Leslie Morgan chart, because this is, this is showing, I think, what the crux of the issue here is, is if we allow greater density and more development in Radnor, this is the, kind of the money that we're trying to pull out of it for that. So, it's, this is the, this is, this is the selling of, of Radnor by the, by the foot, I, I guess I call it. I, I would say that this, to me, is not particularly informative, because we, we end up with highly subjective estimates of this. For instance, we don't put in the Ardrausen debt service, which we have a much better feel of what that's going to be for this year, but we put this in. I, I would argue that we should leave this out for right now, and I don't think that it's particularly helpful, but to the extent that we keep it in there, really, it's, it's, it's what we will, we want to achieve by relaxing our rules for certain people. And that's, that's how I look at it. So, I wanted to make that point. Once again, on page 28, when you look at the, moving on to page 28, once again, we're looking, we're having the 4% increase on business privilege. So, if, if you think that that's a right number, I will leave that to you. I also wanted to talk about staffing a little bit. I know that we talk about staffing and how there is very little room to, to cut, but I, I'm struck by a couple of things. One, I'm struck by the number of administrative staff that we have. We have six, we have six senior, senior management for the township. And does anybody know how many administrative assistants we have? According to our chart, at least last year, it was seven. So, we had seven administrative for six senior staff. To me, that's a high number. For instance, at the law firms, we have three to one, rather than one to one plus, right? Or even myself, in my, my office, we're two to one. So, it seems to me that there, there probably is some room to reduce that. In addition, I, I have, I have taken a look at the rest of the staffing, the administrative staff, and gone through the appendix related to all of the wages and, and other expenditures. I have a plan, I'm showing, modified, that I, I, I feel I could, we could cut 1,125, 1,125,000 without affecting service from, from administration. I, I would like to schedule a time and meet with Bob and Bill, if we could meet, and I'll go over with you what I see, and we can talk about what everybody does. But I think with, with our 118 or 125, I guess we're projecting right now, that we, I think that we certainly have some room to be more efficient. If not more efficient, then I think we have some room to perhaps do less, things that are not value-add. So, I'd like to talk with you about that for our next.
Maybe if we can, can we go through that now?
I, I prefer not to, but I'll, I'll submit something to you, but.
Well, I guess, I guess if, here's my concern, is from the staff. We throw numbers out of, of who is that? Because when you talk about administrative service, administrative assistance, I have one, which is Jennifer, who also helps the board. Bill White, the finance director, does not have one. Tammy, who's recreation director, has none. Steve Norsini has one. Superintendent of Police has none. So, maybe you can help me which administrative assistant.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the chart here.
Well, I think when you look at administrative assistance, as the reduction of staff has been, and the cross-training we've had of the administrative assistants in this building, they do more than just like your law firm. Your law firm people just do one thing. These folks do multiple things across multiple areas. So, the maximum value, so, to me is, when you throw that out, now, I've got to deal with staff, so to me, I look at, if you throw out what the, who the people are that need to go, I'd ask that you publicly say, here's who it is, because you get a lot of public are gonna say, well, yeah, yeah, that sounds good. Well, what is that? Because this is the first time I've ever heard, in over four years, and I talked to staff today, I've never heard one resident call me and say, Bob, you're giving us too much service, please cut back. I've heard just the opposite, is we don't do enough. So, maybe if you can just go through right now who those cuts are, I want to take notes so we can work on them.
No, I, I prefer not to. And the administrative, what, the administrative assistance, what I'm saying with administrative is that we should reduce that number, not eliminate administrative. But I think we could reduce some, but that's not.
But what, who is it? You've got a list of people.
My plan, my, my plan here is preliminary, and it involves whole areas. It's not just administrative. It's, so I want to, I want to find out more about what everybody does, so I'm not ready to, to talk about it. But I'm happy to publish it after we talk about it, so I know exactly what these people do, but.
But Rich, you talked right now, you said you can cut staff of $1 million of personnel. Who is that? Because that's like pulling a number out of the air to say, well, I can cut them. Where, who is it? Who do you have? Because I've got to have that. Tomorrow, I'm gonna go back to staff, and staff's gonna say, who's going of this? I mean, to me, it's.
I, I don't think, I don't think they will.
Oh, Rich, again, Rich, I tell you, you should come, you should come in and sit with me, because in the time you've been here, you haven't come and sat with me and said, here's, to understand the operation. So, to me is, if you.
Well, actually, I have, but.
Rich, you came in and told me that this is all about politics when you came and talked to me, that this isn't about the township. That's what you said, and that's what you told my senior staff.
Let me just.
No, wait, John, if I can. Rich, you throw a number out that you can cut staff and save $1 million, I need to know who that is.
Right.
Who is it that you have right now, so I can just jot down who go, who's the, who, where the areas? Because we can't just throw random thoughts up.
So, can I just, let me just intervene one second here. Back a few years ago, before Bob came in, right after Bayshore left, I sat with John Granger through the layoffs. I sat in the chair next to John Granger as we laid off administrative staff.
I'm not considering, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not proposing.
Rich, let me just explain why this matters.
I asked for, recently, I asked for a pro forma budget that would show a reduction in staff.
We have that coming, Rich. Let me just.
So, and, and I didn't.
Rich, let me finish the comment, though.
So, I, I took a look at it myself. So, let's, we'll go over it, and at the next, at the next meeting, I'm happy to go through it.
Please let me finish the comment. The, the whole point of me bringing this up was.
But I'm not, I'm not talking about John. I'm not talking about doing layoffs.
No, I understand.
I'm not, I'm not talking about it. What I'm talking about is ways that we can discuss and, and talk about the budget, okay?
No, the, the final point was, we actually had to rehire some of the people we let go, because we cut so deep that the work couldn't get done. Okay, that's the point I'm trying to make. It's not about layoffs. It's about, you know when you know you've cut too many jobs? When the work doesn't get done. It happens in my business, it happens in my wife's business. When you cut too many resources and the work can't get done, that's when you really know you went too far. And in my opinion, we went too far, we cut too many heads, and we actually brought them back. They were good employees, we had, we brought them back, and, and now we're getting the work done. So, think about that.
I, I have thought about that, thanks. Also, we have Kathy Mulroy here, and I think Kathy, you wanted to talk about the library, no? All right. All right, that, those are my comments.
Okay, John, Nagel?
One quick budget comment. On page 29, if you go there, Bill, of course, I gotta go there myself, too. Under grant, under grants and gifts, the first line payment in lieu of taxes, and you show that being flat. I think we need to escalate that so that the universities understand we are serious about this.
Yeah, well, I would not disagree at all. As a matter of fact, in prior year's budgets, we actually had the pilot included as one of the forecasted revenues.
And I think, I think we need to do that. They have to understand we're serious about it.
Okay.
And if we put out a budget that says flat, who's gonna take you serious?
And it, it, for, for those who don't know, the amounts that we're receiving there are from Valley Forge Military Academy and the Barak Academy.
But the universities have flat said that they, they don't plan on contributing anything, right? They prepared a report for us, and, right? So.
That, that's correct, Commissioner, and I would say that that report is so flawed, and it would be interesting to have those people who did that report actually talk to township staff and get an understanding, because I'm not aware if they talked to police at all. They never talked to public works, so that, I don't even think that report's worth the paper it's written on.
Are, are we gonna have a discussion on it separately, or have it for a board meeting or be a private, a private meeting?
I think it'd be great if we, we invited the universities to come here before this, this board, and be more than happy to invite them to come here before you in a public meeting and have that conversation. If the board so wishes, love to do that.
Also, Bill, I've been giving you little comments, and I'll send you a couple more. They're not substantive that we need to discuss them here. I didn't notice, though, we use outside counsel for ethics, zoning, and rental housing appeals, and I didn't see where they showed up. Maybe I just missed it, I was looking for it.
Yeah, those, all the special counsel costs are, and I'm in, I'm in, this is 1617, so this is, this is a year out yet, but just to see where they're accounted for, they're under the legal services special line within the administration and the general fund.
Okay, I, I mean, I read that to be just the labor council, because that's what you have in the parents.
Yeah, well, for a period there, it was just labor council. We've added some this year.
Well, we've had the rental housing appeal board now for five years, four years. And we've had zoning appeal board for a long time, zoning hearing.
Those are charged to the community development department.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure, since I didn't see it. And then one other comment, well, first of all, I want to thank the staff, you know, our township, to the resident, it's been transparent what we've been through, but not to our workers. The pounds per man out there on the street picking up trash has doubled, and so, it's, like I said, it's transparent to the people in my community, in my community at least, that we've had these dramatic reductions in staff, or how hard people are working for us, and the really high-quality professional staff we've put in place. And I wanted to thank everybody for that. One minor comment about Ardrausen, just because I get tired of hearing it. And recently, I was doing some work where I was consolidating old backup drives, and I found all the information from the group called CPR, which was the Committee to Preserve Radnor, Citizens to Preserve Radnor, who were the ones that really pushed for the bond vote. And the, the vote, people were voting to purchase open space. Now, if buying Ardrausen doesn't fit that definition, I, I don't understand where you're coming from. Now, Don validly brought the point up almost two years ago, that economic times have changed, and is that still valid? And Bob went out and commissioned a survey, not a big giant survey, but we're still seeing 65% of the people still agree that we should be buying open space. So, that is such a moot issue at this point. The votes are in, we've got an agreement of sale, now we gotta find the cheapest money we can get to affect that and the best way to affect that purchase. And that's all I'll say about it.
Just let me respond really quick. We will get very cheap money, to the extent we borrow money. Interest rates are historic lows, so the people, I guess, I don't know if you guys had planned it that way, that you were gonna close on Ardrausen at historic low interest rates, but if you did, I guess that was a good, a good deal. But the point is that when we say we have an increase, a tax increase of 8.9%, but 4% of it we voted on, that's not true. This is, this is a tax percent.
Rich, the material that went to every household in Radnor Township.
All right, guys, we don't need to rehash it.
Included the fact that there was a tax increase.
We've talked about it for three years.
I still have the postcard that went to every household in Radnor Township.
That was 2006, this is 2015 budget.
It sounds like everyone's had their budget comments tonight. I wanted to, what's that?
Could I clean up one item?
Yes, Commissioner Higgins would like to clean up an item.
The Commissioner from the Second Ward made a point about the gross municipal, minimum municipal obligation for 2011 versus 2014, and he said that that was a huge jump from 2,075 to 4,182. Commissioner Fisher followed up with the point that that's a increase that we have no control over. It's mandated by state law, and if we don't make that increase, if we don't put it on our balance sheet, then we're in violation of state law. So, it's not as if this board, or the prior boards, voted something just willy-nilly. It was something that was required by, by law, and that's why it's.
Well, we also changed the way we calculated it, and with all these things, these are gray areas. So, I, I'd be interested to know the specific legal procedure, as well as the, the applicability of it, but the, the point remains is that this board did have control of what it spent its money on, and, and this is what it's, what it did. So, and this, and this is a result we have now.
Not, not on this item.
Okay. So, everyone's given their comments. I, I just have one last thought I wanted to share. We've had so much discussion tonight about the proper level of staffing and how much we've cut in the past, and it made me recall a conversation that we all had with, I don't know if anybody remembers this, but when we were going through the transition, we hired a woman named Allison Rudolph. She was a former township manager. She was, had worked in, I think, 10, I mean, a lot of other townships as a CFO or, or whatever you call it, a finance director. Very, very well-versed. She was fantastic. And that, but then she decided to move on, and when, when she left, she sat a few of us down, and she said, you know, you guys have done a lot of cutting. I, I've worked in a lot of townships in Pennsylvania, and I have not seen a township this. and I have not seen a township this lean. And, you know, she's, I'm just telling you to be careful. You're the leanest township I've seen. And we were, we were very lean at that point. We were too lean at that point. But it made me recall, you know, we did a lot of slashing and burning when, when we did our transition. And it must be frustrating to come in on the tail end of that wanting to cut more. But it was a very tough time. And, you know, we are now, I think, getting to appropriate levels. Anyway, so I'm going to invite anybody from the public who'd like to participate and give some public comment.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mike Simmons. I'm president of the Employee Association here. I want to thank you for all your efforts. I know it's not an easy job. One thing I wish that people would remember, but, is that when you're talking about numbers and you're talking about slashing, you're talking about ten percent of the workforce across the board, people take that to heart. I mean, you can say that, you know, we're, the conversations are there. We always have to have these conversations. There's been nothing but heaviness since 2007, where the men at the garage have always felt and still feel that at any time they could lose their job. The atmosphere has gotten better. This last year has probably been the best year we've had, as far as like, I mean, yes, the workload is hard this year with the snow of last winter and, and the roads in the shape they've been this year and all that. And we plug along. We don't do as much big work as we used to do, because we can only get to what we can get to. But we do it best we can, and we go about it with, where we used to have five guys on a job. I have three guys on a job. It may take an extra day, but we get the work done, and we take pride in what we do. The thing I worry about is these comments, and I understand that numbers are always something you look at, but you also have to remember in the highway, the parks, and all public works, there hasn't been a new position added in over ten years, a new position. I mean, we're down probably twenty guys from six years ago, because trash being curbside now would cut that number down and change that. But also, guys left and never been replaced. You know, you do without, you have guys coming over. Leaf season, we'll have the parks guys. We'll use the trash guys when they're done in the afternoon. I mean, we utilize people better than we did at one time, and we have better leadership than we've had ever. So the leadership we get, it lets us know where we stand. Bob is honest with us. Bill is honest with us. We know where we stand. There's no hidden ground. But the comments and this talk of like, I got calls last week when I was off one day from five guys, they had heard at the commissioners' meeting that there was going to be layoffs. These are guys with babies on the way. I just, you know, I understand the responsibility of what you guys do, but I also want to remind you, there's people out, the people that, that it affects. I mean, you know, and I try to reassure guys and, and give them the best, you know, like, things are working out. We're doing okay. We're getting by. What we got, you know, the people enjoy the services we provide here. They expect the services because they pay high taxes, and they deserve the services they get. Our job should be, and I always believed since the day I came here, that everything we do should be something that residents should not have to think about. Your trash should be picked up. Your sewer should flush. Your road should be repaired. Your sign should be good. Every day, people have enough to do without worrying about that. And if you're paying taxes the way they do here and in any other community, we provide the services, and that's what we're there to do. We're a serviced industry. We're not here to make money. We're not, never going to turn a profit. We're just not going to happen. But we're going to do the best we can to our ability to provide the services. And I thank you for all your leadership.
Thank you, Mike. And, you know, you understand this is democracy, and everybody has their opinion. So, but there will be no workforce cuts this year. I mean, that's become obvious during this discussion, so...
Well, I don't know how you can say that, but...
You got four votes?
Well, I think, anyway, come on up there.
There's been nothing to vote on at this point.
Sarah Pilling from Garrett Hill. I think it's important for the public to hear from Bill Colarulo as to why the need, and I'm not doubting it, but we each live in our own little bubble. I live in my little bubble on Garrett Avenue. And if there is something societal going on, so there are more drugs in the township, then I think you have the obligation to, right up front now, say what's going on, have Bill say what's going on that's causing him to think that this is something new that should come in our township. Because I think most of us don't know it. We don't see it in the paper. We may not experience it. But obviously, it must be there. So I would appreciate it if you would ask Bill to give us a brief overview of the thinking of this right now for the public who is watching.
I would hesitate to put him on the spot tonight. They have a very thorough presentation. So, you know, perhaps we can arrange to have that happen at some point. You know, if you want to, Superintendent, give a quick overview, but I, I mean, you, you're so thorough. I don't think anything you can say in five minutes is really going to cover the extent of your, but go ahead and, you know, give the overview, the thirty-thousand-foot view if you'd like to.
I'll do this as quickly as I can, Madam President. Thank you. I've been here for three years and seven months, and when I came here, narcotics were not a priority from the current administration regarding the police department. And I'm not saying that is a bad thing. It just was not a priority. Any narcotics arrests were made incidental to another arrest, similar to when you get pulled over for a red light, then an officer is able to write a ticket for your seatbelt. So narcotics were not a priority. The only time narcotics arrest would be made is if something like that happened, or if we would get a 911 call that someone is dealing drugs, or someone is in possession of marijuana, or whatever the case may be. My officers came to me, and they told me about the county forming a narcotics task force, and if we can dedicate certain officers to that task force, we would work within the county as well as Radnor Township. I've done that, and the activity has been remarkable. We've turned over a couple of officers through promotions or retirement or whatever the case may be. And the current officers that I have there are doing it in addition to their patrol function. One of the officers is a sergeant, and he came to myself and Lieutenant Block, whoever sees a narcotics unit, and he says that I think we really have a need for a full-time narcotics unit. So I said to that individual, you show me the reason why. And that officer, along with two other narcotics investigators, did a PowerPoint presentation, and it convinced me for the need for a full-time narcotics unit. Currently, we have twenty-two open cases in Radnor Township alone. I'm not talking about the county. I'm talking about twenty-two cases where people are dealing drugs. I'm not talking about people that are in possession with a small amount of marijuana. Coincidentally, today on Fox News, there was a story where two individuals were shooting up heroin on the R-100 coming in from Norris Town. The young lady had hypodermic needles hidden in her underwear, and the man had numerous packets of heroin. They were going to come here to sell those drugs. On average nationally, every time there is a narcotics raid, one firearm is recovered with every narcotics raid. We have four colleges here, if you include Valley Forge Military Academy. It's naive to think that we don't have, I guess, a need or a market for drugs. When I got here, and it should be this way, the police department in Radnor is service-oriented. We take animals out of people's yards. We assist sick people out of their beds. The problem is, you have to have a crime-fighting component in order to have a service component as well. I see a need for the narcotics unit, but also respectfully, I understand the board's position, that this is a pretty significant increase in, in the budget, close to $400,000. If you're asking my, my opinion, I do think we need a narcotics unit, but I also defer to the, to the commissioners, and if they feel that it's something that they want to revisit later on, I can accept that. But I do believe that we would be naive to think that we don't have issues with narcotics as we have anywhere else in this country.
Well done.
Bill, did you, did you review that with the school superintendent at all? Have you talked with him about this at all?
Myself and the township manager have met with the school superintendent on a number of occasions, not specifically about the narcotics team, but the issue about drugs, which we know is prevalent throughout the country right now. One of the concerns that I know Madam President had with us is we're not interested in, well, I don't want to say we're not interested. We wouldn't target the low-hanging fruit. We wouldn't target the people that are in possession of drugs. Of course, if someone is caught with possession of drugs, they would, they would face the consequences. Our concern is the people that are coming to Radnor and peddling their wares, just like everybody's soul would happen at McDonald's. Lieutenant Block did a press conference. That individual was from West Philadelphia. If he took public transportation, he had to pass by twenty McDonald's to come here, but he chose to come out to Radnor to sell, to sell crack cocaine. There's a reason for that. There's a market out here.
Thank you, Superintendent. Is there any other public comment? All right. Well, we have, nothing else on our agenda tonight, so I...
Would you adjourn?
All in favor, say aye.
Madam President, before you do that...
Yes?
Sorry. Couple directions we'd like from the board, if we can get a thumbs up, thumb down, thumbs down how we want to proceed. First is, we will meet with Commissioner Booker, Rich, whenever you have time. Will, Bill and I will meet with you to go through the personnel. Second, we'd like to try to get a thumbs up, thumbs down on the drug task force and the capital equipment funding, of how we should proceed on those. You take those individually, or...
You want just a consensus, a sense of the board?
I think the important thing on the drug task force is, we have to sit down and talk about how much crime it's creating, you know, that our users to buy these drugs, how they obtain their money. Are they wealthy, or are they committing crime? I think that's the big issue, Chief, and I think that's what you should discuss with the board.
Well, Commissioner, quickly, one of the, one of the original, I guess, propositions that the township manager made was to have four, four individual, additional officers in addition to what we already have. And the reason was, it would be three officers for the narcotics task force, but one to be in the detective division as well. Because just about every crime, every part-one crime, which is your murder, your robbery, or aggravated assault, your burglaries and your thefts, have a narcotics nexus. We had a bank robbery a couple of weeks ago at the TD Bank. I guarantee you, those individuals were doing it to buy drugs. We have burglaries where the, the number one item that's stolen in these burglaries is jewelry. Jewelry is an easily fencible item, and usually it's to buy drugs. Most crime that happens has a narcotics nexus to it, and most people that are arrested for any other crime have some type of drug charge in their background.
All right. So you need some guidance on what your next version is going to be?
I would ask that we hold off on that. I think we're going to have three more reviews of the budget, right?
Yeah, well, on Monday night, to comply with the charter, the preliminary budget, which will be, this version here will be up and will be required to be adopted. And that, that's to satisfy the charter to have a preliminary budget approved and on the books. The final budget, Commissioner, yes. There'll be several reviews, including Monday and then in November.
On the task force, I just, on the narcotics unit or the task force, I just wanted to have a chance to review with the school superintendent and, and the school, school board members, and get some more input on it before we make a call on it. I'm not against it. I don't know that it's, that it's, I'm, I'm for whatever we need to do, but keeping cost as an issue. And, and I know everybody thinks I'm, I'm a bad guy, and, you know, I, I just want to be mean, but I'm really not a mean person, you know. We're trying to rationalize our workforce in the way that has been done throughout the entire country in private industry. So we want to keep that in mind, that it's, there's nothing personal. But it is a large expenditure here, and if we need it, we need it. But I do want to have more input from other, other involved parties within the township before we make a call.
Okay. So you asked for a sense of the board on those two issues as of tonight, not that anybody's taking a vote or married to anything. So I'm going to ask for a sense of the board as of tonight, where you stand on the drug task force if, tonight, whether you're leaning, raise your hand if you're leaning towards not funding it.
So I have the same, I have those reservations. In part, for me, it's because I haven't seen the full presentation. So my opinion is that it's premature to ask that question if you need an answer tonight. If I had to make a yes or no tonight, my answer would be no. But I would like the opportunity to explore it more.
Thank you, Don. So you have four...
At least wait until Monday.
So Bob, you have four or five, not right now, as of tonight, but we're willing to hear more.
Mike, I have.
Okay. The next issue was the...
Capital equipment.
Capital equipment. Can I have a show of hands for a sense of the board? If you would be, raise your hand if you would be willing to, for, to fund a 1.9% increase for capital.
Essentially, what you're doing is, you're asking us to vote on the budget tonight.
No.
They're just looking for guidance.
But that's, that's the, you can't, these things have to move from general to particular, and they have, these decisions have to be made in the context of other decisions. So to me, that, that question is not one that you put to us tonight. It's one that gets worked out over the next two or three meetings and a hearing process.
Right. And at least, at least understanding the budget transfers.
Looking for guidance of what to put in version two. That is what he's looking for.
I agree to that, but like we said, to comply with the charter, this, it's just a preliminary budget. This isn't the final, where you're going to have time to be able, before the final budget comes out, to go all through this. So what we could do is for the preliminary budget, take those two out, and then as we have the discussion, we can add in, if the board wants to, I mean, it's...
So...
Because this is just preliminary. This is not a final budget.
So the reason, Bob, the reason we voted just now was just to give you a sense of the board.
That's all.
And, and the point is, there seems to be a political will for the capital. There seems to not be a political will at this time for the, for the additional police officers. But again, if we have a formal presentation, the board may change our mind. We may completely change.
Absolutely true.
Correct. I, I'm kind of with Commissioner Curley on this. I, I'd like to know from, not tonight, but whether on the task force, is number three, is it three people or four?
It would be three, because township manager decided we would do away with the detective at the time because of budgetary constraints.
Is that a critical number? Could you get by with less? And you don't have to answer that. And then with regard to the equipment, before I say yes or no, I'd like to know, I haven't read the, the full schedule in, in the, it's right here, the capital plan. And so I can't just say yes to that dollar number. I'd rather look at the, the individual items and then try to come up with an analysis that way.
Okay. So I think you've gotten a sense. Are there other issues that you would want a sense on? Okay. We had a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yep. All right. We're adjourned.